Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We're going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Stand for pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tompkins, here. Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greathop.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Item three, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move, A, proclamation, recognize years of service, Lieutenant Musso, to six, A, and amendment memorandum for understanding with City of Port Huron-St. Clair River Coastal Wetland Project, I'd like to move from item B down to seven, H.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed, item four. Five minutes.
Mr. Chair, I would move that the minutes of the February 26, 2015 Commission Meeting, the March 5, 2015 Standing Committee Meetings, and the March 12, 2015 Special Meeting be approved and filed.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation, six, A.
Mr. Chairman, this time I would move to approve the proclamation recognizing Lieutenant Musso for years of service.
Support.
I don't see him here this evening, somebody's going to be attending.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I talked to Tim Donlin today regarding this, and he said that as we would call the Lieutenant Mutt, he said he will, he cannot be here tonight, but there is a plan of, they're throwing a, I want to say a party for him, and I did tell, I'm sure if I would bring that proclamation to him that night.
And you'll let us know in time and dates and all that stuff.
Yes, I will.
Very good. All in favor on the proclamation?
Aye.
Those opposed, item seven, consent agenda, A through H.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve items seven A through seven G on the consent agenda.
That's H, actually, Carl.
It is now. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, item number eight, reports of standing committees, Carl.
At our last regular meeting, we approved the SEDS Plan for the Next Michigan Development Corporation, and last Tuesday, Commissioner Hydeman and I attended the meeting. At that meeting, we learned that all of the counties have now approved the plan. The United States Economic Development Administration has received the plan. They had some very favorable comments about it, even perhaps nominating it for best practice. So compliments to the staff that prepared that. And also, I want to report that our Commissioner Hydeman was elected Secretary of the Corporation.
Okay. Questions for Carl on anything, Howard?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Riley, awful tan over there.
I got two things I left in front of you tonight. I got here early, so I didn't have the reflection there, so. One is the emergency services breakfast, which is May 15 at Alexander's in Marysville. The next one is coming up a week from Friday, the St. Clair County Fireman Association Fifth Annual Awards Dinner in Banquet, which that would be March 27. So I left those two for you to consider.
Okay, very good. David?
Nothing on railroads this week.
Bill?
I'll take a pass, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to take a pass here, too. Any unfinished business? Oh, I'm sorry, citizens wishing to address the board. I have one, if anybody would like to address the board, there's cards that you can fill out, just bring them up to me. I've got Doug Hunter, 1475 Lynn Township Commission, Commission Rep.
Chairman Bohm and Commissioners, first, I'd like to commend you on the professionalism and the way you handled the process to replace Steve Samasco. To procrastinate in this matter would have been a thief that stole time and spent money that is greatly needed elsewhere. You alone guided this process to an island of peace and calm that could have turned to a very turbulent sea. The worst in men is commonplace in such situations; the best is a far rare thing. You are the latter. I have moved my cynicism to due respect. Chairman Bohm, you can tell your mother-in-law, venomous ink that flows from my pen will lighten up so she won't awaken you early in the mornings.
Perfect.
Maybe just maybe ally rather than adversary. Now to the business at hand, Greg McConnell, I feel wholeheartedly, doesn't matter what I'm done to an election, but have won handily. Due to his longtime residence and his family living in the two most populous areas of District, Yale, being his early home in Cape Act where he has prospered, no one could match his name recognition in this area. Mr. McConnell is an honest man who can see three sides to every issue. He listens intently and quickly ascertains a solution to a problem or a path to avoid it. This is why he has succeeded so far and so fast. Knowledge, wisdom, and trust are earned by few at such an early age, and most never do achieve it at all. Charity and goodwill begin in the heart and are learned. Mr. McConnell, to his deeds, to myself and others, has earned the respect that we, as constituents, will trust. Very few will ever question his decisions as the County Commissioner. I urge you to support Greg McConnell, and thank you for your time consideration.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to unfinished business, no unfinished business. Item 11A, new business, the approval of the county disbursements.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the county disbursements for February 2015 in the amount of $14,767.746.29.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item number B, the Clemms Project.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to authorize the Clemms Project for records management and computer-aided dispatch in the amount not to exceed $151,234.48 for the Sheriff's Department Central Dispatch and District Court.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item C, the Goodell County Park Fiber Optic Line Installation. Somebody have that? Give me a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the fiber optic line for parks in not, in an amount not to exceed $14,000.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item D, Resolution 1507 of the Michigan Natural Trust Fund Grant Application of Pine River Property.
Mr. Chair, I would move the adoption of Resolution 1506 authorizing the submission of the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Acquisition Grant Application for the purchase of 25.99 acres of property on the Bell River in the amount of $94,000 for the expansion of Columbus County Park.
Support.
Any discussion? Just for the people in the audience, when we do apply the Michigan Natural Trust Fund, we'll fund up to 74 percent, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, of acquisitions. So when you look in the recent years, we've acquired a lot of properties. I've been on the board 10 years now, and when I first got on here, we had Goodell County Park, and we didn't have any other park system, so we've been able to make the match. This is where the Parks and Rec Millage has been so successful to assist us in the local match, to really grow the Parks and Rec system and to continue to, you know, enhance our Parks and Recs, so. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Howard?
Yeah, and just for the people to know, you know, we've been working on this acquisition, in fact, both of these acquisitions, the one in, on the Pine River, excuse me, Bell River, we've been working on that for about three years, and the one on the Pine River right next to Goodell County Park, we've been working on that for about 10 years, so finally they're happening.
Good. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Tompkins, yes. Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item E, Resolution 15-06, the grant application for the Bell River property.
Mr. Chairman, I also would like to offer a motion to adopt Resolution 1507, which is another Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Acquisition Grant. This application's for almost 39 acres of property on the Pine River in the amount of $195,000, and this is for the expansion of the Goodell County Park.
I'll second that.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item F, the Community Mental Health Board Reappointment.
This time, I'd like to move to reappoint Susan White, representing District Three, to the Community Health Board for a three-year term expiring 3/31 of 2018.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, moving on to item G, the BOC District One Candidate Interviews.
Mr. Chair, did you want to take care of the memorandum of understanding with the City of Port Huron first?
Oh, I'm sorry, Howard, I did, no, actually, the memorandum, that went into item H on the consent agenda, that was seven H. First of all, I'd like to welcome our three finalists here, Greg McConnell, Scott Harris, Jim Marsh. Appreciate you guys being, putting your name into the hat, and Commissioner Tompkins has a lot of experience through the, through his times with the Michigan Municipal League, and kind of tapped Carl on the shoulder and said, "Help us through this a little bit." I went through this process five years ago, and there's really no how-to manual to do this. When Commissioner Kearns passed on, you know, kind of got dropped in our lap, and some parts of it I liked really well, there's other parts of it, to be quite honest, I didn't like real well. So very conscientious of when we were going through this, how do we make it fair for everybody? How do we, you know, do this and do it right? And I'm going to have Carl, I'm going to turn it over to Carl a little bit to talk about some of the things that he came up with, so if it's all screwed up, I'm going to blame Carl.
Well, thanks, Jeff. In my work with the Michigan Municipal League, in public interviews, in public boards, one of the things that we found successful as an organization is to have separate interviews of each of the candidates, and what we're going to do is, we're going to draw lots, the clerk is going to help me with this, and we're going to interview each of you individually, and we're going to ask the other two to be sequestered in another room so that each candidate will hear the questions for the first time, and we think that'll make it fair for all of the candidates that are participating this evening. And our process is going to be, I'm going to hand out a list of questions, there'll be one for each Commissioner, and they'll each ask that question of each candidate, and they will be able to ask another question of clarification, and we'll go through all of those questions, and at the end of that process, we'll open it up for any other questions that the Commissioners want to ask. The reason that we're undertaking the process that way is you need to have some sort of measure after everything's done about how people responded, and if we don't have at least six questions that were all identical, it's really hard sometimes to benchmark the candidates. So with that, I would ask our clerk, Jay DeBoyer, to have the candidates draw lots.
Yeah, what I did is, actually, it's pretty high-tech, I put three names in a cup, so we'll draw a name out, and I think we're going to ask the other two candidates to go across the hall in the conference room.
Kerry's going to go with them, too.
Mark.
Kerry will go with one candidate, and our Parks and Recreation Manager, Mark Roshiel, will be with the other candidate.
So if you don't mind, we'll just do that, right? First candidate is Marsh.
So we'll have the other two.
Continue to take one of these and pass them along. Oh, absolutely. What I'm handing out, I've prepared three sets of questions, and I've designated a question to each Commissioner to ask, and again, the format will be, and we'll start with Mr. Greathop, and I've left space here for you to keep notes on the candidates, and after we've completed those six questions, we'll open it up for other questions, and Chairman Bohm will facilitate that for us.
Yeah, one of the things, too, on these questions, I just, Carl, put these questions together, Carl, I sat with him today, maybe at 2:00, he ran them by me, I gave them back to him, none of the other Commissioners, even Administration, has seen these questions. Like I said, Carl does this stuff, I said, "Carl, you handle it," and it's kind of where we're at, so.
Jim?
Yes.
Once again, thank you for coming. I've been in the hot seat before, so. We're going to start off with question one, Mr. Greathop.
Thank you. Jim, welcome, and my question to you, Jim, is, as a county commissioner, you would not only represent the citizens of your district, but their other local government units, including townships, villages, and cities. How would you propose to communicate with them?
Well, excuse me, I think that's really a good question and an important point because as District One Commissioner, you're responsible to not only the District One residents, but all the residents in the county, and I'm sure that there are people who live in Yale or Cape Act or Emmett or some of the other townships other than my hometownship Clyde saying, gee, we wish we had someone from our township or our city. If I were appointed as Commissioner in District One, the first things I would do after becoming acclimated to the board and oriented through Mr. Bohm and other processes, I would immediately compile a list of the leaders in the government entities for those townships, cities, and villages, contact them by phone, and then try to have a direct face-to-face meeting to talk about concerns, issues, what's going right, what's going well with the county, how can I help? The second thing I would do would be to try to sit down with Commissioner Samasco. He was the Commissioner for District One, he knows some of the problems and issues from both sides, both the county side and the District One side, and I think he would be a valuable resource. But very clearly in my mind, this board brings with it, or the Commissioner's seat, the burden of representing your district residents as well as residents in a whole for the county. You have any follow-up to that, sir?
No, perfectly clear, thank you, Jim.
What we're going to do, too, at the end, after we're done with these questions, we're going to open it up to others that may have any other questions.
Sure.
Question two.
That'll be my question. Are you interested in only filling former Commissioner Steve Samasco's term through December 31, 2016, or are you contemplating being a candidate in the next election? And if you are planning to run, what are your thoughts today about how you might organize a campaign for the next primary and general election?
Let me say, Carl, you did a good job putting questions together, because that has absolutely been on my mind.
That was actually, we had some input, that was my question.
Right, well, it's, I'm sorry, it's a great question, because when I was first approached to see if I had any interest in this position, very honestly, my first immediate reaction was no. My second reaction was no. And then the individual I was talking with, I said, "Well, let's talk a little bit more about it," and we continued to chat about it, and then I said, "You know, this is kind of intriguing, I've been retired for two, three years now, I'm just kind of relaxing, enjoying life, and let me think about this and call you in the next day or two." So that evening, I thought about it, I called some people I know, I called Carl, as a matter of fact, since he's a current Commissioner, to find out a little bit more about your board and what you do and how you do it. And the more I thought about it, the more I thought, "I've got a wealth of experience, business-wise, serving the community, and I think I have something to give and to offer to the county." And my initial thoughts were very clearly and very definitely, gee, this would be nice to do for a predetermined amount of time. However, the more I've been involved in this, the more I've thought about it, I have been thinking about, boy, this is a great opportunity, not only to do something for the next couple of years, but run for election and try to be successful in winning that seat in an election. And I think, while I can't give you specifics at this point in time as to how I would run a campaign, I think the groundwork and the basis for that is getting to know the leadership in those communities, getting to know the business people in those communities, trying to do the best job I can as a Commissioner, and move forward that way. I think, in my mind, even though I've been in the insurance business most all my life, I don't view myself as a great face-to-face salesman. What I view as selling myself is the honesty, the sincerity, and doing a great job, and I think if you do a great job, people will recognize that and bring you forward. So, does that answer your question, sir?
Close enough, yes.
Thank you.
Honest.
Okay, Mr. Riley.
Okay, Jim, my question for you is, each Commissioner is elected to represent their district's interests when voting on county issues. The Board of Commissioners makes decisions that affect citizens throughout the county. How would you balance the interests of the county at large with your district?
I would go back to some words I said last week, and unfortunately, you weren't here, Mr. Riley, but I am committed to doing the best thing for the residents of this county, to the exclusion of, as an example, I'm a pretty conservative person and a Republican by nature, but in faced with a situation of where do my loyalties lie? They clearly lie every time with what's best with the community as a whole, because there are times, any time you make a decision in business or on a board, everybody's not going to be happy with that, and you need to pick the decision that's best, in my mind, for the community at large. And at times, as you read in the newspaper about things in someone's township that are going on now, you have to make tough decisions, but if you can't make tough decisions, you don't belong sitting in the Commissioner's chair either. But the simple answer is, what's best for the community as a whole is where I would put my money, so to speak.
Good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tompkins.
Voters elect the prosecutor, the sheriff, the drain commissioner, and other elected officials to administer their own budgets. This is how the county is different from other organizations. They elect the Board of Commissioners to set their budgets, which is one of our most important statutory duties. What is your experience in developing and approving multimillion-dollar budgets, and how would you approach our next budget if you were selected as our next county Commissioner?
The experience I've had with budgeting is, in my mind, quite substantial and broad and varied. My budgeting experience runs from running a local insurance office with a budget in any given year of $4 to $5 million. In putting that budget together, I was, at any one time in that office, we had between 28 and 35, 37 people. I was responsible for putting the budget of each department together, putting the whole budget together, making the budget assumptions and estimates on revenue for the coming year, and then sitting down with the Regional Vice President, responsible for my corporate region, and going through that budget, selling it to him. At a little bit later date in my career, I became responsible for two other offices, insurance offices in the state of Michigan. Combined, those three offices were a little bit less than $20 million in revenue. I had to assist the heads of those other two offices in putting their individual budgets together, and then present the entire package to my Regional Vice President. As I moved to other organizations, as an example, Port Huron Hospital, as Chairman of the Hospital Board, and then Chairman of the Parent Holding Company Board, Blue Water Health Services for the hospital, my position was one of more that I view as a Commissioner's job, where other people put the budget together, and what we focused on was budget review, and in my mind, an absolute key part of that are the budget assumptions, because if you make crazy budget assumptions, you're going to end up down the road trying to pay the piper. So I think it's extremely important in any budget I ever look at, first thing I want to look at is, what are the budget assumptions? What are the revenue assumptions? What are the expense increase assumptions for the year? And then I try to make a judgment, and if I have the abilities to do that myself, I do. If I need some additional financial information, I'll dig that up so that when I look at those assumptions, I can make a judgment that, hey, I think our assumptions are solid, therefore, that gives us a good basis to follow the rest of the process in putting that budget together. Does that answer your...
It does, I have one follow-up question.
Sure.
When you talk about these assumptions, whose assumptions are those? Are those the assumptions of the board? Are those the assumptions of the department heads?
It's a little bit of both, and I'm not sure, and I know you're currently on the hospital board, Carl, and I'm not sure if that process has changed, but the way it used to be is, is our Chief Financial Officer would come to the board, we would talk about the coming year, oh, thanks so much, I have a little bit of something going on here. And we, the board would talk about, we would set priorities for the coming And we, the board would talk about, we would set priorities for the coming year, things we want to do. When we talked about assumptions, revenue assumptions, we really quizzed our Chief Financial Officer as to the validity of those, and how much we were going to be paid from third-party payers, and how much our expenses may increase. So, it wasn't a matter where, as a board person, we were sitting there, or as a chairperson, kind of by ourselves out in left field. It was a cooperative process among all concerned. Because there were times early on in my hospital life, so to speak, that we got some pretty interesting budget assumptions, that if the board hadn't caught them, we were going to end up in the middle of the year with some real issues.
Thank you.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Marsh, my question is, most of the people agree that one of the most important problems facing St. Clair County residents is our economy and the lack of employment opportunities. However, there is much less consensus on the role local government should play in addressing this issue. Opinions range from no involvement to expanding substantial public dollars on economic development. What philosophy would you bring to the Board of Commissioners on this issue?
Let me tell you about that, and again, let me commend Carl on some great questions, because your questions are cutting to the heart of the matter, and I think they're hitting the nail, so to speak, square on the head. If you would have asked me that question, Commissioner Heidemann, five or six, seven years ago, I think you would have gotten a very resounding, you know, it's okay for government to get involved a little bit, but let's be a little bit careful and conservative with that. My feeling, however, has changed over time, and some famous president somewhere said something like, "If not us, who?" And I think that's appropriate to today's world, particularly in St. Clair County, where historically, we've lagged behind the rest of Michigan in jobs and with our economy. I think currently, the county units of government have the wherewithal to make a difference, and I think they should use their resources to do whatever they can to forward that interest. And obviously, it's an extremely controversial topic. But again, if not the county, you know, who? Because can you really count on us getting our fair share as a county of other monies out there? And if we don't have the people, the talent, and the resources to do it ourself, you know, I don't think in this world too many other people are going to come in and help us a lot. So, I'm all for local government doing whatever they can to brighten up our economy and create jobs.
Last question. This is the one I always lied to Bill Greitop about. The County Board of Commissioners has only two scheduled meetings per month. However, every member is expected to serve on other department and agency boards and attend other scheduled business meetings. These meetings occur mornings, afternoons, and evenings during the business week. A hundred percent attendance is not possible, and the Board Chair assigns appointments to accommodate individual schedules. What limitations do you have in your personal schedule?
I have absolutely zero limitations. I'm retired. We have a motorhome. We like to travel a lot, but the past several years, those have been more like long weekends as opposed to long getaways. And I believe I mentioned this last week also. I'm not the type of person who likes to get involved in a whole lot of outside activities. I think my time is more valuable than that. I don't want to be known casually by a lot of people for a lot of insignificant things. I want to invest my time where I can make a difference. And when I get involved in something, I don't stick my toe in or dabble my finger in. I jump in a hundred percent. So, do I want to spend 40 hours a week in retirement, working on behalf of St. Clair County? No, I don't think so. But this couldn't be any more of a time commitment than I had as Chairman of the Board of the Hospital or the Parent Holding Corporation for the hospital, which was, depending on what was going on, could have been 10 to 15 hours a week. There were times when we were in negotiations for various things. It might have been 20, 25 hours a week. So, whatever the job entails, I'm committed to do it.
Okay. Any other questions from any of the other Commissioners?
I just have one.
Sure.
I serve the Board on our Park and Rec Commission. Any comments on Park and Rec Commission or any of the other villages that we have in the county?
No, not at this point in time, but if I could just take a quick minute, as I've been through the process of trying to learn more about the county and the County Board of Commissioners and bring myself up to date with things in the county, I really would like to commend this board and the administrative arm in putting together a great website. Your website is one that, for any citizens of this county who are interested, can get on it and very quickly pick up a sense of what's going on and how good a job their county government is doing for them. So, I think you're all to be commended.
Any other questions from Mr. Marsh at all? Any closing statements you'd like to make?
No, that's basically, I would love to do it if I'm the person that you all think can meet your needs and assist you and add value moving from this point to where you want to be in the future. I would love the appointment and appreciate it. If I'm not that person, I certainly appreciate the opportunity I've had to meet you all and present myself to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Do you want me to leave?
No, you can. Candidate McConnell. Let me go get him. Yeah. Once again, we've got six questions that are going to be asked by all the different Commissioners, and then at the end, we are going to open it up for any additional questions that the Commission may have. So, we're going to start off. Question one, Mr. Greitop.
Greg, first off, thank you for coming. My question to you is, as a county Commissioner, you would not only represent the citizens in your district, but the other local government units, including townships, villages, and cities. How would you propose to communicate with them?
I believe that I would attend their governmental meetings, and definitely not all of them, but at least once a year, I would want to be at one of their meetings in person and have some type of an email connection where I could have a question-answer. You know, if they have any questions, we can get them some information. Because to me, the most important thing, there's so many times decisions are made, and if there's not pure transparency, maybe it's the perfect answer to the solution, but if they don't understand how you got there. So, sometimes it's just that little, that little time and energy you can spend talking to them to let them know exactly how you came up with your answer. But I definitely think, once a year, I would be in person at every township and village and city.
Very good. Thank you. Nothing further.
David.
Right. Question two. Are you interested in only filling former Commissioner Steve Semasko's term through December 31st, 2016, or are you contemplating being a candidate in the next election? If you are planning to run, what are your thoughts today, and how would you might organize a campaign for the next primary and general election?
Well, I guess number one is, whether or not I would become appointed, my aspiration would be to run next time regardless. So, I guess the answer is going to be yes, I would like to continue. I think it's a, there's a huge learning curve in figuring out what's going on, so in a 22-month period, I think I would be very lucky to have enough to have a great grasp of what's going on. So, I would like to have the opportunity to continue. Once you get your feet wet, it'd be nice to go for a long swim. I think if, I'm from the area my entire life, born and raised in Yale and lived in K-Pac probably longer, or definitely longer than I've been in Yale now. Done a lot of business with the townships and municipalities in my area through development processes, whether it be land or commercial buildings. And I would just, I would ask help from some of the individual township people, you know, as far as going out and getting information, and then it would be some advertising and some flyers and newspapers.
Question three, Mr. Riley.
Greg, mine's got, each Commissioner is elected to represent their district's interests when voting on county issues. The Board of Commissioners make decisions that affect citizens throughout the county. How would you balance the interests of the county at large with your district?
You have to represent your constituents, and that doesn't always mean you have to do exactly what some people want to do every time. You have to always look at the big picture. If there's a chance for the EDA to do a project, and there's a large factory that's going to be going up in Watoms, and it's going to have 1,200 jobs, that doesn't, that doesn't bring a tax base to the Village of K-Pac, or to the City of Yale, or to the townships in our area, but it certainly is going to have some trickle-down effect as far as housing and bringing up values because of home prices going up. So, I would think that there's going to be lots of times that there's going to be a decision made that is going to be in the best interest of the county as a whole, and you just may have to make a decision that isn't going to make everybody in your, in your district happy. I mean, there's, I have no problem with explaining why I did something. Doesn't mean you're not going to be wrong sometimes, but if you're never wrong, you've never made it, you've never made many decisions.
Very good. Thank you.
Carl.
Greg, the voters also elect the prosecutor, the sheriff, the drain commissioner, and other elected officials to administer each of their own department's budgets. They elect the Board of Commissioners to set their budgets, which is one of our most important statutory responsibilities. What is your experience in developing and approving multimillion-dollar budgets, and how would you approach our next budget if you were selected as our next county Commissioner?
Well, from a budget standpoint, when you look at multimillion-dollar budgets, I guess I'm not going to tell you that I've done that. On a smaller scale, I work with the downtown development, I chaired in K-Pac, and albeit it's minor, we have $56,000 a year in revenue that comes in, and we're responsible for figuring out how to spend it and what needs to be done. I'm Chairman of the K-Pac State Bank in K-Pac. We have 80 employees. We have $230 million in assets, but that also is loans and investments. We, we take care of the budget process there. And, I mean, budgets are set up, you have to deal with what you have. I mean, you can't pull feathers out of a hat. It's just, I don't know. I mean, to give you dollar and cents figures, I mean, I don't know what that would be. I just know that it's a, you have to sit down and you have to figure out where, how much money you have to spend, how much money's coming in, and how you're going to, how you're going to come up with the budget. I mean, it's just a process that has to go through everybody. Services are important. I mean, when we look at, in our area, we, we have roads, road patrol and road work in fire departments. I mean, that's, that's what, that's what the county is providing in Lynn Township. Lynn Township doesn't have, I shouldn't say they don't have a business, they have lots of farmers, and farmers are huge businesses. I don't think they think of themselves as much that way. When you look at Chamber of Commerce and, you know, belonging to the, to the business group. But, I mean, budgets are something that, I mean, it's going to be, that, to me, that's a tough, that's a tough issue, and I'm sure it always is a tough issue. When you're not generating, for me and my business, it's real easy. I can hire a new person, and I can say, "You're on commission." And if you generate $25,000 a year, you're going to get a $20,000 paycheck, and I'm going to make $5,000. And if I have five people that want to do it, it's a real simple process. And different here, because you're not making widgets, you're not creating money. So, you're at the, at the mercy of what happens with the tax base that you have no control over as far as reductions go when property values drop like they have over the last five years. And it would be a challenge. It would be an exciting challenge. I mean, I would look forward to that. I know that, that probably there would be more in attendance when it comes to those times. I'm sure that everybody that has their, their foot in it would want to be here and make sure that they were giving you their expert advice. So, and you need that.
Perhaps my question was focused too much on multimillion dollars, and I was more interested in process. Maybe, maybe the best example would be the process that you use as a board at the bank. Could you talk a little bit about how as Chairman and the Board of Directors at the bank are involved in the budget process?
We deal directly with our, our President of our bank sits on our, on our board, and our Chief Financial Officer is involved. They come to us with, with a budget, and then we go over it, and we look at everything and talk about capital expenditures, you know, are we looking at, we always have money set aside for new buildings, we have money set aside for, you know, for our roofs, for our air conditioners, you know, we put money away whenever we can for that rainy day, for the new parking lots that we need. So, they bring us their have-tas-haves, and then we fill it in with, you know, how we want to improve, whether it's signs or whatever we decide to go with, if it's a marketing campaign, or, you know, facade improvements, whatever. So, we don't start at ground zero and build the budget. The budget is brought to us as far as, this is what we think we need to run things, and then we look at it and say, "We don't have the money to do what you want to do, so now let's pick and choose and put priorities on things that are necessary." And, and that's how it works for us.
Thanks. Okay, question number six. Oh, I'm sorry, Howard, I jumped the gun. I don't ever pay attention to Howard anyway, so.
Thanks, Jeff. I'll remember that. Question number five. Most people agree that one of the most important problems facing St. Clair County residents is our economic and the lack of employment opportunities. However, there is much less consensus on the role local government should play in addressing this issue. Opinions range from no involvement to expanding substantial public dollars on economic development. What philosophy would you bring to the Board of Commissioners on this issue?
I look at, our bank joined the EDA as a, as a businessman member. I think there's a lot of merit to helping establish businesses. I think there's a lot of businesses that are out there today that are looking to put a facility somewhere, and I don't know that they're coming out saying, "We want to be in K-Pac, we want to be in Algonick, we want to be in Marysville." I think that they're out looking for areas that are saying, "We want you to come here." I think that they're out looking for areas that are saying, "We want you to come here, we want to help you." And so I think they're looking for the locations that have that established group that is saying, "What can we do to help you come into our communities?" And whether that's through the EDA or whatever, I think there is some, there's some merit. I, I know in K-Pac, Keyon Corporation is our largest employer, and they've been out there, I don't know if it's been six or seven years that we had them. They would not have been in K-Pac if it hadn't been for the EDA that, that came to K-Pac and said, "Look, we've got a company that's looking to be on I-69 and needs this much property and needs water." And there was a good participation with, with the funding of some sewer and water lines and some road expansions and different things that came in, and it, and it worked. And without having something, we would not have, I don't think we would have had that business. We have another business in Muzzy Township that just worked through the EDA on, on some type of a, some form of a tax abatement. It's Miller Broach, and they're, they're putting a huge expansion on right now. I'm not saying that they wouldn't have, they were already there, they're, they're just expanding, but maybe without the assistance, they would have looked to another community that, that was offering something. So I think there's definitely some need. We don't make widgets, but if we can create some, something that brings tax base and jobs, that's our widget. So I think we have to look at things. And there again, I mean, that comes down to the budget, and it depends how much money you have to spend, and that becomes a priority. You have to decide what's, what's more important. And I guess I don't know, without looking at all the numbers. I've looked, I've been watching and looking on your website. You guys do a lot of stuff. You make it look easy, right? I mean, it's just like that. There's, there's lots of, lots of knowledge that has, that you've, you've got here, and I, and I respect that. I would, I would love to have the chance to, to learn. That's the exciting part for me, is I think it would be fun to, to dive in and find out what's going on. And like I say, I know it takes a while to get your feet wet, so, but yeah, I think we need to, if I go and ask Steve Kauflesch from Lynn Township if he thinks that it's important that we have an EDA, he might not think that that's a great idea because odds of a factory ever going in Lynn Township are unlikely. They don't have water and they don't have sewer facilities. So when you're going to get anything of any magnitude, that you're going to have employees of three, four hundred, you're going to have to have some type of services that they're, they're just not going to have out there. That's just never going to happen. So that's one of those situations that they're not going to have, you know, you're not going to have the full buy-in from them, but I think with the right explanations, I don't think it's going to be a problem with them understanding why you would do something like that.
Okay.
The County Board of Commissioners has only two scheduled meetings per month. However, each member is expected to serve on other department and agency boards and attend other scheduled business meetings. These meetings occur mornings, afternoons, and evenings during the business week. One hundred percent attendance is not possible, and the board chair assigns appointments to accommodate individual schedules. What limitations do you have in your personal schedule?
As long as things are planned in advance, I don't think I would have limitations. Twenty-nine years in the business, I'm not real aggressive about pushing at this point. We've got a nice clientele where we're at. I have three team members that work for me. My daughter's my office manager. I have, I have a lot of flexibility at this point, so, like I say, as long as I know in advance and it goes on my phone and beeps and tells me, it works out pretty good.
Okay.
Any other questions at all for Greg from anybody? I have one more. Commissioner Rushing always brags that he is the best golfer on the board. If you got elected, would Commissioner Rushing be the second-best golfer on the board?
He very well might be. But I'd have to see everybody else first because maybe somebody else is going to be.
I'll keep score for him, he'll never make it.
You have anything in closing at all that you'd like to add, Greg?
Well, I, again, I, I thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate the fact that I could have a phone interview on the, on the twelfth. That made things a lot easier for me on the home front. So I would really enjoy the opportunity. I think I have, I think I could be an asset. I would, to me, it's a huge learning experience, and anytime you get to learn and find out something new, it's, it's fun, it's a new challenge. So I am what I am. I don't pull any punches. You're not going to have to wonder what I'm thinking because I'll very certainly be willing to share it with you. But the thing I realize most about boards is that everybody has an opinion, and if everything's always a seven to nothing vote, six to nothing vote, maybe we don't have the devil's advocate. And sometimes people need to play the devil's advocate just to stir something. But when a vote happens and it's over, if I vote against something that everybody's voting for, when it comes to the next item, the next item's the next item. So I'm a very firm believer that there's a reason that there's a board, otherwise you would just have one person and you'd have a dictatorship. And so I just think, I understand the workings of a board and how it works, and I think I could be very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Greg, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
More than welcome to hang on. You didn't answer the one question, though.
He is the best golfer, by the way, so it's not a secret.
Only if he's keeping score, though.
Scott, thank you. We've got six questions. Each commissioner's going to ask a question, and what we're going to do at the end is we're going to open it up for any other commissioner questions, so. Mr. Greatop.
Scott, first off, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you very much. I wanted to thank the board for actually selecting me. I really think it's an honor and a privilege, so thank everybody for, you know, bringing me to this position right now.
You're very welcome. All right. My question to you is this. As a county commissioner, you would not only represent the citizens of your district, but the other local units of government, including townships, villages, and cities. How would you propose to communicate with them?
You know, I've actually thought about that quite a bit, and I've actually reached out to Grand Township, Yale, Mr. Osborne over there, Mr. Dieter, and I really look forward to that challenge, to introduce myself and become familiar with each and every one of those municipalities and so forth, and to get to know them and to work with them. I really feel that's important because the funds that we're spending is the District One's funds, and we need to be a steward of those funds. We need to know and understand specifically what their, you know, requirements, what are the important items for them. And I really feel it's important for the person who's going to take this position to be the lead communicator with all those individuals.
Okay. Thank you.
David.
Right. Question number two. Are you interested in only filling former Commissioner Steve Semasko's term through December 31st, 2016, or are you contemplating being a candidate in the next election? And if you are planning to run, what are your thoughts today about how you might organize a campaign for the next primary and general election?
Exactly. I wouldn't have even contemplated this position if I didn't think I was going to take that next step. I think the person who's going to take the position to fill that District One position has to also look forward to how then to campaign and succeed in maintaining that seat. So I would work with the individuals that I know within the community. I know a lot of people who are in politics and would work with them to get their foresight and understanding and their history and experience of how to organize a campaign, and then use that during this appointment time to generate the correct body to then be prepared, to then be prepared for the election.
Okay. Mr. Riley.
Hey, Scott. Mine is, each commissioner is elected to represent their district's interests in voting on county issues. The Board of Commissioners make decisions that affect citizens throughout the county. How would you balance the interests of the county at large with your district?
Great question. Yeah, first and foremost, I'm looking for, you know, District One, that's my priority, there's no question about that, but we have a responsibility for the, for the entire county. So we have to look at the entire package and understand that the downtown area, the waterfront, the manufacturing in the south end of town, the businesses that are in this area, we want them to all succeed. Number one thing we know is that even District One in every area of the county, jobs are number one. So if we had more employment, this county obviously would flourish and do better. So to do that, we can't be self-focused on just that district. We have to also look at the entire county as a whole. How do we best develop economic, positive economic growth in the area? How do we develop the waterfront? How do we bring in people for during the summer months and during the tourist times? All that product, all that development will allow for more businesses to flourish and the ability to bring in more economics. So not only is it extremely important to cover District One, it's very important that we look at it as a whole. So everything that we do has to be dual-focused, not just for District One, it has to be for the entire county.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Carl.
The voters elect prosecutors, sheriff, drain commissioner, and other elected officials to administer their own budgets. They elect the Board of Commissioners to set their budgets, which is one of our most important statutory responsibility. What is your experience in developing and improving, approving multimillion-dollar budgets, and how would you approach our next budget if you were selected as our next county commissioner?
I really, my belief is this, that the county commissioners are not the person, the group, or the individuals that are creating the budgets. It's our responsibility to do our due diligence, understand the budgets, understand the finances that are being spent, understand and talk to those individuals, those departments to understand why the funding is required and requested, and it's important for us to look at the thirty thousand-foot level. Excuse me. A good example, that's really what I do for a living currently. I manage my operating plan currently is just shy of nineteen million dollars. My job is not to do the daily nuts and bolts. My requirement is to do the oversight. So I've got a pretty good understanding how to level, you know, understand how to manage it at a very high level. I wouldn't be the guy going out there trying to demand specific information, or I would demand specific information, but I wouldn't demand changes of departments. They, they drive it, they bring it to the board, we evaluate it, and we would make the decision. So that, my approach would be at a very high level and very detailed understanding of what's happening in the budget, try to get a good understanding of it, make an educated choice, and vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Howard?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Most people agree that one of the most important problems facing St. Clair County residents is our economic and lack of employment opportunities. However, there is much less consensus on the role local government should play in addressing this issue. Opinions range from no involvement to expending substantial public dollars on economic development. What philosophy would you bring to the Board of Commissioners on this issue?
Another great question. My opinion is this, government has a role to play in all businesses, there's no question about it. We can't have roads, we can't have drains, we can't have infrastructure. If we don't have telecommunications, we don't have the power to create, you know, businesses and employment. None of that will happen. So my philosophy is, if the governmental body has to have the position to assist in those areas, in areas that the city and local governments are good at in the county. I really believe that through incentives such as, you know, tax incentives and also other areas that we can look at, that we need to use those types of issues and ways to entice businesses to come and flourish in these areas. So I'm pro-business, I want the business to flourish and grow. We want the businesses to pay their employees a fair wage, we want to have good healthcare, but we also know that the primary responsibility of a county board such as this is the infrastructure to provide, to create the best environment for businesses such as that to develop and flourish. So that's the way I would approach it. Hope that answers that question.
Okay. Moving on, last question. The County Board of Commissioners has only two scheduled meetings per month. However, each member is expected to serve on other department and agency boards and attend other scheduled business meetings. These meetings occur mornings, afternoons, and evenings during the business week. One hundred percent attendance is not possible, and the board chair assigns appointments to accommodate individual schedules. What limitations do you have in your personal schedule?
Yeah, there's no doubt. I am currently employed by a company, and they expect me to execute, which I will do, there's no question about it. But for the past twenty years, I've worked out of my house, I've created my own schedule. I am completely monitored and judged by deliverables, my execution. They don't, I don't punch in and I'll punch out. I completely control what I do, where I'm going to be. I'm actually a mobile twenty-four-seven, online businessperson, so I can literally be working while I'm driving down the road. So I have complete flexibility in what I do. So I really, that was probably my biggest concern, to make sure I could do that. And after really thinking about it, I believe that with my ability to be flexible, I'm not going to hit every one of these meetings, there's no question. There's going to be circumstances where, you know, my current employment's going to make it difficult or impossible to meet, but I feel with my ability to manage my schedule, I'll be flexible enough to execute and fulfill all those obligations.
Okay. Any questions? David?
Just, just one on the previous question Howard gave you on question five. On your statements, kind of put you on the spot here, but you says the government plays a role in all businesses, and then you mentioned that they should see that they pay a fair wage and also provide health insurance. That concerns me.
No, 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 no. I didn't, no, I said, through our ability to provide the infrastructure to create business, the businesses will pay the fair wage and all those other amenities. Government doesn't have a role in that. I'm pro, there's no question about that. I'm glad you clarified that.
Okay. Any other questions at all?
What we are going to do is we are going to have a, oh, I'm sorry, closing statements. Any closing comments or closing statements?
Only that, again, I really think this is an honor and privilege to be here, and I think that if you gave me the opportunity to fill the District One position, then I would do it one hundred percent. I didn't take this on lightly, and I feel that if you gave me the opportunity, I would execute it at one hundred percent. So thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, actually, the commissioners, you were just going to chit-chat here a little bit, I guess, about county commissioners, you know, this is the world according to the bones, as I always say, then I'm going to pass it on to the others. First of all, I think we've got three great candidates involved in this, and I can personally, you know, be happy with whomever gets selected. One of the big things that I must stick with for, as many of you all know, is the scheduling. I feel all the candidates have the flexibility, because this job, you asked Mr. Greatop, two weeks, two meetings a month, we lied to him way back about that. I had two today, I had two, you know, I mean, we go to meetings and we go to meetings at all kinds of screwy times of the day. And if you don't have a commissioner that is able to participate in that, it puts pressure on the rest of the commissioners to, to attend those. I don't think people really realize it, how busy these schedules are, and the rest of the commissioners, I think you'll shake your head on that. When you get down to this in the interviews, you know, this is tough, because like I said, we've got three great candidates. I look back when I went through this before, Tim Ward, invited Tim Ward to the board to be part of that process. One of Tim's strong suits was, Tim wasn't a great interviewer, he'll tell you that, that's not his MO. Tim served on this board for four years, Tim was a great commissioner, and to be quite frank, the only reason he probably left this board was because he didn't have the the commissioners, I think you'll shake your head on that. When you get down to this, in the interviews, you know, this is tough, because like I said, we've got three great candidates. I look back when I went through this before, Tim Ward invited Tim Ward to the board to be part of that process. One of Tim's strong suits was, Tim wasn't a great interviewer, he'll tell you that, that's not his MO. Tim served on this board for four years, Tim was a great commissioner, and to be quite frank, the only reason he probably left this board was because he didn't have the time commitment to be able to put as much time as he wanted, because Tim had the quote-unquote "real" job. I've received a lot of phone calls on particular candidates, people that I put in very high regard that have called me and, you know, said so-and-so, because, be quite frank, I don't know any of you three, you know, I'm, sorry, but I don't. So when, you know, I get those phone calls from individuals that know other individuals and speak very highly of them, that, for me, probably even outweighs a lot more the interview process, you know, because people have known you for a lifetime. So there again, world according to Bohm, I'm gonna shift this over to Mr. Tommy.
Well, I agree with the comment that we have really great candidates, and I was just trying to go through these questions and pick out who I thought just finished first in each one, and I was gonna use that, you know, to kinda quantify and tell you exactly who I favor. Now, I know Jim Marsh because I was on the hospital board with him. As he mentioned, he called me once, I happened to be out of town, and we talked a little bit about the county board. I met for a little lunch with Scott Harris and talked with him, and I think both of those individuals have had some really good responses to our questions, thoughtful people. I thought Greg may not have had the 30,000-foot view, but I liked a couple of his responses because I think he had some more in-the-trenches kind of knowledge. I mean, he's actually been there, worked with township, village officials, and so it's, you know, it's kinda hard to understand. I, you know, basically, we had three candidates that said on an important question, it's what's best for the whole community, which I tend to agree with as well. But I also like Greg's comment, I mean, he knows what it's like for us because we've made some of those decisions and we've had townships that haven't agreed with us, and I think the thing that we really need to do is go back and talk with them. I, I'm, I guess that's all I have to add to this point.
Okay, Howard?
I'm still as confused as when I was, when I was going to vote for it, yeah. I liked Mr. Marsh's comments about preparing the budget and making assumptions. We, over the last, probably 10 years, ever since Sean Groden was here, we put out a budget five years in advance, and then, you know, we ask questions, you know, if this assumption, and we do this, what will the budget look like five years from now? And when we see it going into the toilet, we call Carrie in and say, Carrie, help us out here. We can't go that far down the tube. So we've been very fortunate in taking that long-range plan, looking at assumptions in terms of what they will be for expenses, what they will be for revenue, and where we will be. And as a result, we've not only maintained our ready-day fund, we've actually increased it a little bit, maybe a percentage or so, and we've had our bond rating increase. So I understand how important it is to make those assumptions and look at where we're going with that. The other thing is Carl and I were to the I-69 Next Michigan Development Corporation meeting, and I'm also chair for the Michigan Association of County on taxation and economic development for county commissioners, so. The interesting thing is no one said that local government shouldn't have any involvement. Everyone indicated that we need to be involved in economic development at some level, and so that was positive, so. I've got a lot of debating to do internally, so I may be the last one voting tonight.
Mr. Riley?
Well, first of all, I was not at the first of what I did at the opportunity to, I was on vacation, you can take vacations if you have this job. But in looking over the resumes, number one, which I did, I went through them, read them real close, paid attention. Tonight, I thought the comments were very good. The thing I liked mostly was that everybody seems to have the right attitude toward, it isn't just my region, my district, it's the whole county and what we want. So I thought the questions that were asked, and I gotta say very, you did, Mr. Tommy, you done a good job putting this together, there's no question. I agree with what Jeff said. I also, even because I was gone, did receive phone calls on some of the comments that were made at the last. I also got some since I've been home, and I kinda got mixed emotions on a couple of questions, but I think overall, everybody has great qualities, and the only unfortunate thing is we can't pick three. And I see that loud and clear. So I think I'm pleased with the meeting tonight, I really am, and I'm pleased with the three guys that got picked, and I wasn't here to do that the first meeting, but I'm here tonight, so.
David?
Okay, I'll try to make this short. There's many, many variables that went into this, and until you sit in one of these seats, and I ran for office about 10 years ago as township supervisor, and I had the idea that when I get in that seat, I'm gonna do things my way. Once you sit in a seat, I represent District Six, and that's who I have to represent first, and that's my opinion. And you got different opinions up here, what if you represent the county first or your district first? Me, it's always been district first, but, and every one of you sounded on this, that if, make a decision for the county that benefits your district, then you can go back and explain that to them, and you have to be able to do that, otherwise you can't support the position. So on that, but on the next one, both Tom and Jeff brought this up. I have had a lot of phone calls, written, support of a lot of officials that are elected to office and also professionals, and that carries a lot of weight, because when you're coming up here, it's not your usual interview for a job. This isn't like trying to be an engineer or something else, or an insurance salesman or representing the insurance or the tooling industry. This is a different type of interview. So there's a lot of variables, you come up there and you get hit with unknowns. So some of the questions were answered very well, some of them were answered kinda vague. I think the budget was the most vague, somebody be at some experience in that. When I was township supervisor, I had to make the whole budget myself. Of course, we don't do that here, Carrie does that with our administrator, and we oversee that. That's our statutory duty as county commissioners. So we don't get our hands dirty in that, but we do as a group, pick through things that we, okay, I'll pick mine on the road. When I first came here, one of the reasons I ran was Wally Evans. The road funding was approximately about $600,000. The county commissioners, through seven of us, got that over $900,000 now, and that goes to the townships. I basically represent townships in my district. So that really assisted the townships, and that's what I pushed when I was here. That's one of the things I could do as a county commissioner for District Six. Other than that, the budget, I think, I'm not sure any of you have been able to actually have your hands on an actual budget, other than overseeing what Mr. Marsh said, looking at the, what's bringing to you, and looking over it that way. Of course, we do that here, Carrie does that, and like I said, county administrator. I'll pick through things, and I pick through contracts pretty good. I think when our attorney's up here, uh-oh, Dave's going through another contract.
I thought you were our attorney, Dave.
Oh, we lost our attorney. Anyways, I think everybody did a great job, I think we're gonna be more represented whoever we put in there, and really thank everybody for coming forward, because representing your service to your community, that's a big responsibility, whoever gets the seat.
I'm gonna let him talk, then we'll do one more roundabout if anybody has anything they want to chime in.
You wanna go ahead, go ahead?
Well, I'm real quick, like, the one I was gonna, Jeff hit on it, and I think it's extremely important, the amount of meetings that you might attend, or should attend, you can't attend them all naturally, but I was on in '02 and '04, and then I stepped down because I didn't wanna run again right there for some reasons. During that period of time, the first year, a little better than I was back on this particular board, I attended more meetings that year than I did the previous two. It used to be two meetings a month, and you had periodically, you'd go to a township meeting or a city meeting, that's fine, but we have all these other ones now, and I'll give you a good example with the convention center, we have tons of meetings on those, and you have a lot of other ones that pop up, depending on what area you handle, as far as the committees. The last one, I had a lot of the seniors areas, et cetera, and there's a lot of meetings that go on. So the average citizen out there in our area think that, oh yeah, they got two meetings a month, boy, they, what a deal, you know, no big deal at all. And one of you, and I don't remember which one, mentioned about people showing up to meetings. This is a big attendance some nights. You get very few people show up because they're not concerned until you push the wrong button, and now you got a whole room full. So I think there's a lot going on that people don't see, but I'm impressed with the board we've had. I've been on it two years, going on now the fourth, and I'm convinced that all three have got good qualifications for this, and there is a lot of meetings that you're gonna have to attend, but you can't attend them all, and you do get to take a vacation, I'll make that real clear here.
Thought you were gonna be short.
Well, I am short, I'm under seven feet, so.
We do get along up here. I had the opportunity to talk to Jim for a few minutes when he came in earlier, and I told Jim, I said that of all the decisions that I've had to make in the four and some odd years that I've been on this board, and the controversy that we've looked at, and some of the tough things that we've had to do, I told him I thought tonight was gonna be the most difficult for me to do, to sit down, because I have talked to all three of the candidates, I happened to have lunch with one of them, I had a lot of phone conversation with another one, and read the resumes, listened to the five-minute speech you gave, listened tonight, and you just confirmed what I thought it was gonna be the most difficult for me to do. I thought all three of you did an excellent job. Jim, you knocked the socks off on two questions at least, and Greg, you did two different questions, and you really killed them on that one. And Scott, you had two questions that just, so I would like a third, a third, a third, if I can put that together, that's what I would really like to do, because I really think that we were very, very fortunate tonight to get the quality of people from the community who have the desire to serve the community that you three gentlemen have shown us tonight in everything that has gone on. Personally, when I'm looking for somebody to sit on the board up here, I'm looking for somebody that is an individual person who will carry that individuality to this board, but by the same token, I want somebody sitting up here with like interests and like direction, so that if we're going down the road and we're all tugging in somewhat of a general direction, we don't have somebody pulling us back this way or pulling us sideways. Doesn't mean you have to agree with us on everything we do, but I want somebody sitting up here that is going to pull in an approximate direction that we all want to go, so that we do get things done. I'm very proud of the work that we've done in the last four years that we've been on this board. I think that we have accomplished a lot, we've gotten a lot done, we've streamlined a lot of things in this county. Services are probably as good as they have ever been, and yet we've managed to cut the budget by $10 million over the past four to six years. And to be able to do that says something about the board moving in a similar direction. So that's one of the things that I'm looking at, is which one of these gentlemen tonight is going to be able to come up here on the board and do the job we want to do, but beyond that, which one of you will bring some individuality and still fit in and be one-seventh of the whole up here, and not necessarily off in a different direction? So that's kinda where I'm stuck. And I will reiterate one more time that this decision is probably the most difficult. I've been grinding it in my head for days, and I'm still grinding, so I think that's about it.
I just, a couple more comments, I guess, on the county board in general. I've been on the board 10 years, and, you know, the county board, if you look, I think from where the county used to be at versus the cities municipalities, and Carol's been around this a whole, a lot longer than I have, but the county board is the lead agency in the county that makes a lot of things happen. Cities, through the bad economy, the cities just have, they don't have money to do a lot of things. When they lose people, they don't replace them, you know, so it gets really hard. So as a county, we, via through the Blue Meets Green group that we started four years ago, that I'm actually co-chair of, I put a lot of precedence on that, because we do a lot of community priorities planning, just not this board. We seek a lot of people's input from the outboard, and that kinda gives us a lot of the how-to map on some of the different things that the county takes a lead on. If you don't think the county board is not the leader in the community, then you'll find out, if you sit in this position, that's the furthest thing from the case. We agree to disagree all the time. One thing I can tell you, as board chairman, I've served on boards where I was sat in a corner, didn't know what was going on, didn't have the information, votes would come up, I'd look, where the heck did that come from, you know? And I can tell you, being the board chairman, that was one of the things that, I'm big on three commissioners to meetings, you know, you can't have any more than three, seven max, if you go to forward to quorum, but I constantly have other commissioners in meetings with me if we go in to have any discussions. So it's just not myself bringing information back, but it's a group collectively. I take a lot of pride, served with a lot of sharp guys up here, contrary to belief, and I take a lot of pride in keeping my guys informed on all the issues, and I don't think there's any one of them here that'll say that they don't know what's going on whenever anything's come before this board. Where did that come from? We're all in the process. Whether you agree to disagree, I've got no problems with that. I just know when I served on the board before, and I sat in that corner and didn't get any of the information, that didn't sit real well with me, so that's the thing that I really try to bring as the county board chairman. I don't know any last comments at all or anything?
Just one, if Commissioner Greatop thinks it's difficult to make that decision tonight, how does he think I feel, knowing that I have to vote for a Republican?
You can abstain.
Howard, you just have to abstain, conflict of interest.
I will, I will comment. If you wanna fill this room with constituents, all you have to do is announce that we're gonna do the dog kennel ordinance again, and we'll have this room full.
And Howard, we will accept you coming into the Republican Party, it's not a problem. We'll fix you up.
Okay, any closing comments at all?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've been poring over my notes, you know, that's why I set this thing up, you know, to take notes and everything, and, you know, final analysis. I really appreciate Scott's comments and everything. I agree with his philosophies, I'm not sure he has as much experience as the other two candidates, and when I look at the other two candidates, we've got two different people, and as I listen to these comments, I think Jim Marsh has a lot of big-picture thinking. I think he's, I think that came out in this interview, and even though a lot of people haven't contacted me, you know, quantity isn't really quality, I'm very, the one, the one thing that I think Jim's a little short on, and he's very straightforward about it, you know, and he talked about, well, my first reaction was no, my second reaction was no, and then the more he started thinking about it, you know, the more he was interested. Greg, on the other hand, is somebody who has, may not, may not have the 30,000-foot view yet, but he has a lot of practical experience. I mean, he's said some of the same things with very concrete examples of things that he's worked with, and that makes him attractive. And so you're complimenting me on the questions, but if we all end up and we're having a hard time making decisions, they weren't such great questions after all. And what I hear some of you saying, and I know you'll speak for yourselves, but you of you saying, and I know you'll speak for yourselves, but you know a lot of people that know Greg, and he's very highly recommended, and that's important to you. I don't know those same people. The people I know know Jim Marsh, and I, we had a hospital board meeting last night, and, you know, several people from the community came up to me and talked about Jim's. Some of them even indicated that, you may not remember Jim Marsh, he was on the board a long time ago. I said, you know, actually, I did have a chance, and our terms did overlap on the board, and he was chair of the holding company when I was just a board member, and subsequently, I became a member of the holding company too. So not based on the resumes, not based on their answers, I think I have to go back to my own experience with this individual, and I think I would favor Jim Marsh.
David.
I'm gonna disagree with Bill Greitop. I grew up on military bases, and you sit in these seats to make decisions. I own a business. I love making decisions. I love the tough decisions, so it's not gonna be a hard decision for me. We have decisions to make, and if you're pushing one way or the other, well, you need to make up your mind to do it, but you need to make a decision. And mine's very easy. All the officials that contact me that have been elected officials, and we have three great candidates. Got a lot of literature, written letters and stuff. I'm gonna push for Greg McConnell. I think he's the best one to represent District One.
Any last comments, or anybody? So does somebody make the motion? Do I do that, being the board chairman? Do I pull the senior rule on all you guys?
I can make a motion to appoint Greg McConnell.
I would second that.
Any other discussion? Any other nominations, or do we need any other motions? Should we do that?
We're on a roll call. You got motion and support?
All right, then a roll call vote.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin.
No.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
No.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Passes four-two. Okay. That concludes the appointment to District One. Once again, we appreciate everybody being part of the process. You do the swearing in?
Yeah.
Wanna do that, get that out of the way?
Absolutely.
Greg?
Uh, you can go right down there. Raise your hand. You faithfully swear that you do the District One County Commissioners to the best of your abilities in and for the county and central county and state of Michigan?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Greg.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the administrators.
Can he sit up there?
Yes, he can. Sworn in, member of the Board of Commissioners.
We'll even let him make a motion to cut the administrators' pay tonight. First heavy lifting.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the amended memorandum of understanding with the City of Port Huron for the St. Clair County Coastal Wetlands Project.
Howard, that was in the, we went over that earlier, that was. We had it in 7-inch earlier.
They moved it to 7-inch and did it in the consent agenda, so.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So we're in administrators' report.
Okay.
I'll keep the report brief tonight. First of all, I wanna thank those of you who attended the MAC meeting that you hosted earlier this week up at the Convention Center. I think it went very well. We had some nice representation. It was a great opportunity to show off that facility and tell the story of the decisions and the commitments that all of you have made to the community. A reminder that the State of the County address is next Friday at 11, begins at 11 o'clock at Alexander's in Marysville. If you have not contacted Chris or Jenny, I would ask that you do so as soon as you can. Let me go immediately now to the Convention Center. I think that's what a lot of people really wanna hear about. Just a couple of things, you know, we're getting close to announcing an opening date and some of the activities that will occur on that date and around that date, opportunities for people in the community to see the facility and learn a little bit more about what went on during the construction phase. We will be announcing the ribbon cutting and the grand opening of the facility at the State of the County address next week. There are a number of folks that are working on putting together that event, and we'll share a little bit about what's going to happen those days when we speak about it next week. As you can tell, now the snow has disappeared from the site. It's quite a mess, so we've got a lot of cleanup to do yet this spring and summer, but that's certainly not going to hold us back from an opening. We are busy working on the finishing touches over the next couple of weeks. The punch list continues to be addressed. Every day, we find another little thing here or another little thing there, but the contractors have been great about getting up there and addressing all of the issues. Right now, we're just down to little minor things. We wanna make sure that the public gets what they've paid for, and we get a nice facility that's ready to open with everything working and everything nice, bright and shiny to start off. Most all of the final FFNE, or the furniture and the fixtures and equipment, has been ordered and has been coming in. There are deliveries every, every couple of weeks, a few more things that need to show up on the site to ensure that we can open for business. You've already seen some of the marketing material. That continues to evolve, and we'll do so as we identify other opportunities up there and other markets that we could potentially tap into. You've got a copy of the budget. That was in the agenda packet, where we stand with the project, as well as a separate sheet that tallies up all the change orders and where we're at with the change orders on the project. So if you have any questions about that, feel free to give me a call. The signage, you probably noticed that the sign went up this week, went up on Monday on the facility. There will be some other signage, a lot of interior directional signage that will be going up over the next couple of weeks, one of the last steps we need to take before we do open the facility. That's all I wanted to cover very quickly with you. I've got, if you've got any questions about what's going on with the Convention Center, rumors you've heard about what's happening within the organization, I'll do my best to answer those for you.
Commissioner Greitop.
Can you say with all certainty at the given moment right now, we are on or under budget?
Won't say we're under budget. I will say we are on budget, yes.
On budget?
Correct. You know, as you know, in a project like this, every time you turn around, you discover something that, you know, we never thought about that, and we never thought about that. But we're doing our best to continue to identify opportunities to cut certain things or reduce certain costs. There are even a couple of issues that we continue to work with the contractors on that could result in additional deducts on the facility. So, you know, that's something that the construction manager and our team, you know, Jenny Posey is involved in a lot of that, really constantly nick away at, to see where we can save a little bit here and a little bit there.
I noticed that you had a pretty good balance of money still left over to do some of the things. I don't know what the outstanding bills might be, but based on what I'm looking at there and what you're telling me now, it looks like we're gonna come in on budget.
David.
I just wanna stress, with past history in the county and the budgets with building like the jail, we have done an amazing job. The administrator, and Kerry, and the commissioners involved, to keep this thing on budget. This was a very important thing that we did as commissioners, to maintain the services within the county and still build this facility within budget. And this board has been very careful with the dollars, and like Howard's brought up, we have expanded our fund equity over the years that we've been doing this, even with the downturn in the economy. So very conservative board, taking very good care of the dollars of the county.
You know, this jail thing, I've been on the board ten years now, and I got jail dropped on me day thirteen, so I lived through that. I can tell you, we've probably built five or six 13 and a half million dollar tower build. We did the day treatment night watch facility. We've done, I can't even.
Fund this one.
I mean, we've done at least five or six large-scale, million-dollar-plus-plus projects. Haven't screwed one up yet, but, so when anybody always strolls this jail thing, that's 11 years ago. I can point to tons of stuff that we've done since, and, you know, of course, nobody reports about that, but Howard, you put it down.
Keep in mind, we were very fortunate right after Tom left the board. That was, that we brought in, we brought in Sean Groden, and Sean Groden put in policies, some policies for watching the budget and making sure that we were running effectively. And the big thing was setting up the change order committee. I don't, and I, Tom, you were there when we were building the jail. Do you ever remember being invited to a change order meeting?
They didn't tell us anything.
And yet, we ended up a million dollars, the contingency fund, like, disappeared overnight.
Change order was testing.
And this time, around nine million dollar project, we had a change order committee, Chair Bohm, Commissioner Riley, and myself, and then as an alternate, Commissioner Tomlin. And believe it or not, I mean, we had, we went over every one of those. We probably had, what, 15 meetings or so?
Twelve for sure.
Twelve for sure.
Yeah, if not more.
And so, making sure that, you know, there was a change order, we were there, we were informed. And then we presented that in the, in the consent agenda at the next meeting, so all of the commissioners knew what was going on. We, you know, we tried to make it as open and accessible as we could.
You know, if I might chime in on just what you said, Howard, on that change order deal, I think that was the best thing, because everybody was knowing what was going on. The thing I liked about it is that every time we met as, on the change order committee, if the contractors on their own come up with ideas that would save us money, and if we did it this way, or, you know what, we don't have to do that, we can do this, et cetera, they saved us. The contractors were the best group as far as working together and coming back with us with suggestions to help us make those decisions. So I thought it was very well-run, the whole project.
Anything else on the administrators' report?
I'd also like to recognize Jenny Posey's work.
Yeah, big time, big time.
She really did an absolute wonderful job supporting the administrator and our change order committee. She was, she was really on top of all the details, and she played a key role in that project.
Yep, huge. Anything else?
Motion to receive and file administrators' report. This time, I would move to receive and file, oh, yeah, the administrators' report.
Second? On favor.
Aye.
Receive and file.
So moved.
At this time, I move to receive and file packets that were sent to commissioners, packets at their places, and other information presented.
On favor.
Support.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. McConnell, would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
No, we don't wanna do that.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 p.m. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.